Your new life.
Prior to tonight's meeting, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Harris, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
God, I stand before you today, seeking your guidance and wisdom in what is perhaps the most difficult times this city and our nation has faced in recent times. It was once said that you cannot connect the dots looking forward, you can only connect them looking backwards. So you have to trust that they will somehow connect in our future. That being said, it is important that we all continue to trust in him and continue to have faith in believing that he will indeed see us through this and that we as people will become stronger, more resilient, and more importantly, increase our standards of humanity. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, visible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got it away.
Mr. Presser, will you call the roll?
Nothing to do about it.
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Meiner?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes from our meeting of March 23rd, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the March 23rd meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Gentlemen and ladies, we are holding the first ever Sandusky City Commission meeting electronically. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk. We will answer those that pertain to tonight's legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience question from the appropriate staff. I want to remind commissioners to leave their mics off until they wish to speak and that there is always a slight delay in reception, so I would ask you to speak slowly and speak softly. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Almost every item that this commission acts upon requires the expenditure of residents' tax dollars. We all know this. Those dollars and exactly what they fund come from a variety of different sources. I believe it's important that we understand that fact and that our residents understand now more than ever exactly how we are paying for these goods and services and what funds they are coming out of. The budget that we passed last week, we all knew was not going to be the final version. We knew that then, as we know that now. Our financial picture is changing, and it's not changing for the better. Prior to acting on our agenda items tonight, I think it's important to hear from our city manager, who with the collaboration of his staff have developed a framework of how we intend to act responsibly to both reduce our budget while still providing essential services and continue to plant seeds to foster economic growth in our city. To do one without the other, I think it's to bury your head in the sand and only hope for the best. Let's refrain from doing that. City Manager Webster, I'll ask you to speak to this issue.
Thank you, Commission President Brady, commissioners, staff, and any audience that's listening in. And as Commission President Brady stated, you know, these are very unique times, and we are fortunate as a community that due to the leadership of this commission, the hard work of many staff, and the partnerships that have been forged over the last several years and the trust of our community, that we enter these difficult times in a stronger fiscal position than we could have entered them at almost any other time in the recent future. That being said, this is unprecedented. I don't think many of us have lived through anything quite like this in the quickness with which this pandemic has ground to a halt our local economy and the national economy. And therefore, staff has been working very hard to, with the guidance of the commission, look at opportunities immediately to begin holding down expenditures so that as we begin to see a significant decline in revenue, which we know is coming, we'll be able to face it in a stronger position than if we did business as usual right now. And so what I would say with that is that through March, and we sent the financial reports to you through March, revenues have actually come in strong, even though the beginnings of this happened sort of mid-month around March 12th was when things such as Tom Hanks announcing that he had coronavirus and the NBA closed down. That led to a chain of events that ultimately the governor did his first significant shutdown on Sunday, March 16th, as two restaurants and then has added a lot of other things to that over the last several weeks. That being said, even through March, our revenues held relatively strong. And if you look at our expenses through March, you can see that we've already made some changes that will allow us to have expenses under budget through this point. So we come into this in a relatively strong cash position, and that helps. That being said, we know that it won't be enough. We know that, you know, things like Cedar Point, you know, our restaurants and retailers continue to be closed, much of our manufacturing base, both in Sandusky and around Sandusky, where Sandusky residents work, continue to be closed. And ultimately, we know that our largest revenue generator and the ripple effect from that generator, Cedar Point, is delayed and will likely have a down year due to that delay and the specific nature of this pandemic. So what staff has done is to identify what reductions in our budget we can make in 2020. But we did that, I want to state that the philosophy we adopted, which is one that we were urged to consider by members of the city commission, is that we don't want to undo the significant momentum that has been created in the city over the last several years. Since the passage of issue eight, we have dedicated resources to certain activities, things like economic development, like the remediation of our housing, like the rebuilding of our neighborhood parks, like the maintenance of our trees and sidewalks and the resurfacing of our local streets at levels that were unprecedented, what the city had been doing in the past. While we need to reduce nearly all of those programs or the amount of projects that we're able to take on on a year-to-year basis, we don't want to get out completely of any one of those businesses because we know that, you know, it'd be the equivalent of a company completely reducing their sales team, their marketing team, their research and development team, their product pipeline at a time during recession, only focusing on core businesses. The reality is that's a bad long-term solution. So while you'll see dramatic reductions there, as in many other areas, in what we're proposing, we are arguing that the strides we've made in those areas in places like recreation, where we've been able to deliver award-winning programming, and community policing, where we've added an element to the police that's really helped us to build stronger relations with the community, that we don't get completely out of any of those new areas that have all been renewed since issue eight. And so what we have done with that guiding principle is looked at what reductions we can make. I'll start with staffing. You know, nearly 60% of our total budget is our human capital. It is the salaries and the benefits of those who provide services to our citizens on a day-to-day basis. So we cannot balance a budget that is in decline without addressing that. And so we wanted the department heads and myself to lead by example. And so the first thing that we did is for all employees that work for the city, administrative employees that make over $70,000 a year, we have implemented a 10% wage reduction across the board. And that begins with our next pay period and will go through 2020. In addition to that, we have frozen hiring, and so through attrition, we'll create vacancies. And I will only sign off on the filling of essential positions as determined, and I will certainly keep the city commission abreast of that. But our goal is to hold vacancies longer or for the duration of this year where possible so that we can achieve savings in addition to that on personnel. And then in addition to that, for administrative employees that make under $70,000 a year, we have asked them to elect one of two options. One is to take a 5% pay reduction for the remainder of the 2020 calendar year, or we've given them an alternative to take one furlough day per pay period, which would be the equivalent of eight out of 80 hours in a two-week pay period, or 10%, so they would work one less day or one less shift, and then their pay would be reduced by 10%. Most of employees have elected to take the 5% reduction that had that option, but there were a handful that did take the 10% reduction. So that's what we've done with administrative employees. We've also begun a dialogue with all three of our labor unions, who contractually, we don't have the right to modify their contracts without their partnership and support. At this point, the, all three labor unions have elected to not take reductions, but they've stated that as more information becomes available, and part of the challenge there is that if you look at our budget today, it does not yet reflect the declines that we know are coming based on the decrease in activity over the last over 30 days. And so what we're going to do is as information becomes available, we're going to continue to work with the labor unions as closely as possible and look at what options exist with them to achieve further reductions. But with just the administrative employees, that's a saving of over $100,000 annually. And then in addition to that, we've had every director sit down with their staff and their team and go through their operations and maintenance budgets. These could be some things, supplies, travel, we've postponed all travel, equipment, computers, any non-personnel-related expense, and we've asked them to rank those as green, yellow, or orange, with green being can be caught immediately, orange being can be caught with pain, but can happen in an orange, you know, sort of a caution, we can look at this, but it would be a last-case resort. And as we start to go over those numbers, we believe we can achieve over $400,000 in savings on a citywide basis to the general fund from the reductions that we can make to operations and maintenance this year. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier in my remarks, we believe that we can achieve about 1.8 million due to postponing, eliminating, reducing, or looking for alternative forms of financing our programs for development, our planning projects that were planned this year, as well as the reductions to our infrastructure investments in the given year. And again, we have not wiped out completely the budget for any one of those programs, but we've recommended delaying projects, et cetera, and reducing the amounts in certain funds for this year while we can continue to evaluate. The goal of this, and we consider this a first phase of our savings, that would provide up to nearly 2.4 million dollars of savings this year, which we think gives us time to watch and see how the market responds over the next several weeks. But we've already begun to look at, and really, there's not much left to do other than to look at staffing levels. And so we've already begun those discussions as to if we did have to make any staffing reductions, how we would begin to do so. Our goal is to see that these 2.3 million to 2.4 million in savings that can be achieved without staffing reductions can give us several weeks to make decisions on what we would do with the staffing plan as we have more information. So the next phase would be to come back to you with that information. We go to the finance committee this Friday. They have asked to meet once a month during this recession period. I think that's a good idea, and so Michelle has set that up, and I believe Michelle is on the call. I don't know if she wants to add, she's been along with our law director, our assistant city manager, and every department head. We've met very closely on how to get to where we're at today. It's not a situation that we like to be in, but it's one that we have found ourselves in, and we want to make sure that while we hold this city in a strong position, that we're able to do so in a way that, you know, allows us to keep running, to maintain our existing momentum, but to also come out of this in a strong place. So with that, I turn it over to Michelle, and certainly anyone else who has questions or comments, we can discuss those at this time.
Hi, everyone. It's Michelle. I just want to reiterate what Eric said. He explained everything greatly. This is the first wave of what we're looking to do to help the budget this year. As he stated, we're unsure at this point what our revenue will be, but at this point, we can control our expenses, so that's where we're at, and that's what we're going to be focusing on right now. So this just reiterates the sheet that's up on the screen right now of how we came to the $2.3 million of cuts that we can do initially with the budget before we have to look at further cuts. So I can send this out to all the commissioners also, so you guys have a copy of this for the future. There's daily conversations that we're having, so if anybody wants to ask us any questions, feel free, we're working on this daily.
Commissioners, I know this is the first time you're getting to see these numbers or perhaps hear this explanation for some of you. I'm sure that both our city manager and Michelle and staff welcome any questions you may have at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Yeah, I don't need any detailed questions, but just please provide the detailed work that makes up these numbers so we understand what development projects, what capital equipment, what they're taking out of these budgets so we get an idea what we're going to provide in terms of service and progress for the city. So just, they're worksheets.
Absolutely, Commissioner Poole. That information is already available, and we'll have that out to you, if not yet today, certainly by tomorrow, I'm sure, won't we, Michelle?
Yes, I can get that emailed out tonight.
Good. Any additional questions regarding this piece of our agenda before we get into our real agenda? If not, thank you, Mr. Webster. We'll move forward.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have 10 items on our consent agenda, three of which are liquor permit transfers. Are there any of these items that you would like to move to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I would like to have the first item, A, moved to the regular agenda, please.
Excellent. Item A will now become item number one on the regular agenda. Presser, will you present those items left on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. The first one is an easement with Columbia Gas of Ohio Incorporated for the West SUD Utility Project. The second is the Venice Road Right-of-Way Dedication for property owned by Ben B. Bailey and Mary J. Bailey Trustees. The third is the Venice Right-of-Way Dedication for property owned by Toc Dairy. The next is a change order with Baumann Enterprises Incorporated for the Water Tower demolition. It is a deduct-only. Next one is a grant application with ODOT for the safety improvements project. The next is a grant application with Erie Metro Park for the Recreation Department. The next is a liquor permit transfer for Morin Foods LLC, doing business as Save-A-Lot. The next is a Traxx liquor permit for New Beginnings Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as 1058 Event Center. And the last one is a liquor permit transfer for Rainbow Kitchen Entertainment LLC, doing business as Crowbar.
Commissioners, having heard these items on the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiner?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda items B through J, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section affected in the ordinance and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Presser, will you pull the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances, resolutions, and liquor permit transfers.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those ordinances, resolutions, and liquor permit transfers are passed and approved. Mr. Presser, will you present the new item, number one?
Yes, this item is a second reading of an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Precision Paving Incorporated of Midland, Ohio for the 2020 local street resurfacing project.
Commissioners, item number one is a second reading and therefore does not require a motion, so we will simply begin with discussion of that item.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
Reason that I asked this to be polled is a follow-up on a conversation that we had with Mr. Webster and with Ms. Reader, and the issue is this. I'd like a little bit of time to see where this economic crisis and health crisis is going to go so that we can consider whether we want to expend this money this year. It would certainly be a possibility that we would proceed with this project. I don't want to see the city stop all progress on streets. Now, there's another item coming up a little bit for Route 6 that I think is critical for us to approve. But here's the issue. We have the ability to finance this work as opposed to paying for it with cash. We are seeing, I mean, we've already been in a low interest rate environment. We have the opportunity to borrow money at virtually nothing in terms of interest rates at the particular moment. And so, and also, given the way this project was bid, we had only one bidder. It was bid at a very busy time in the economy, and the world has changed. So it is my hope, my belief, that we could potentially expand this funded over five years as opposed to doing it all now and get it at a much better price and also give us a little bit of time to consider what it is we want to do. I would oppose approving it now because I want to preserve those dollars, but I think that, you know, in the future, we might, in the very short-term future, we might consider this, but I would urge a no vote on this so that we put this bid behind us and take a look in the future at what some better options might look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Any other discussion, commissioners? This is, it is a very important piece of legislation. It's the paving of our city streets, and certainly it's long overdue. Unfortunately, it represents a $700,000 expenditure from our general fund, and our engineering director, Mr. Klein, and I have had arduous discussions regarding what projects we can afford to postpone, which ones we simply cannot do at this point in time. There just are not a lot of $700,000 general fund opportunities that we can set aside, even if it's just for the moment. This is unfortunately landing at exactly the wrong time, you know, for us financially. I like the concept of bonding a project like this. That would spread the cost, I think Mr. Murray's indicating, over five years at very, very low interest, if any interest at all. That may even allow us to expand a project like this to include more city streets. Lord knows we need them, but I support not moving forward with this legislation also. Commissioners, additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
Are we going to put this on the back burner then for like 30 days and then bring it back? I would think by then, I'm hopeful by then that this virus, it won't be completely behind us, but it'll look a lot better, you know, for us going forward. So is this going to be something that Mr. Murray wants to table then for like maybe a couple meetings and then take a snapshot of it again?
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond. For you, Mr. Chairman, the answer to Mr. Waddington's question is absolutely yes. I would like to take a pause, see where we are, and I would think about that timeframe. You know, late May, maybe early June, see where we are, but I think that we still need to do this work, but the ability to do so at a better price on a broader basis and then finance it at very low interest rates, I think is an option we might want to take a look at. But for that reason, I would vote no as opposed to tabling it. We've discussed this with Mr. Hayburger, and the way to proceed properly to allow us that option is to vote no tonight as opposed to tabling it. Thank you.
Okay. And if I could, through the commission president, staff, Commission President Brady mentioned Director Klein, we've mentioned Director Hayberger and Director Reader Finance. We are all in concurrence with the idea that this is something that we absolutely want to do, but we support voting no tonight and then allowing us to bring this back in a revised form as soon as possible that allows us to potentially have more flexibility.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?
The, I think this gets to probably what we're going to be discussing in pretty much detail going forward, which is what are our priorities? For me, I'm thinking that roads and streets are what we passed issue eight for. And in a $22 million budget, to suggest that we can't find $700,000 in cuts elsewhere while we put off our roads, I just need some more convincing to do that. The, and essentially, that's really what it comes down to. This is not a significant amount of money out of a $24 million budget that we're trying to find cuts in. So I'm in favor of going forward with this unless you come up with something other than just, well, we're going to look at this. I'm not sure there's anything to look at. You either have a road to, a pathway that says a month from now, we're going to pass A, B, or C, and this will occur, or I think I'm more inclined to want to do what the public, do what we know needs to be done. This takes us back to 2008 and those problems where we put everything on hold and didn't take care of our roads and put our community in a situation where we're not the place people want to come to, to live, to buy homes, and just, if you don't provide the services that are needed, people, we're just never going to get out of this. Population will just continue to slip. So I think this is a big decision. And last week, last meeting, fought very hard and insisted on spending 1% of our admissions tax on art objects to put around the city, and then you come back and tell us something that I consider basic, you can't, you're not, you're going to do away with our road projects. So I encourage my fellow commissioners to say, yes, we need to do this, and then we'll look and find someplace else to find these reductions.
Additional discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine?
I understand Commissioner Poole's perspective on approving this project to continue it on, but I also understand the need to be prudent in the expenditure of funds at this point in time. It is, we are in some challenging times, and unfortunately, we don't know how long we're going to be in this situation. So I do appreciate the work and the collaboration of the city staff in looking for ways to possibly hold off on something. This, I do support holding off on this and looking at other ways to possibly fund this, stretching it out over a longer period of time. It is a little frustrating to, again, as Commissioner Poole had mentioned, to have this legislation pretty much come forward and be ready to be finalized, and then all of a sudden, we have to kind of stop ourselves in our tracks to look at, you know, whether this is something we need to do right at this minute or look at other ways to possibly again stretch out the funding for it. So I do support voting no on this at this time, but to continue to look for a way to get this funded, whether it is a bond issue or if we find that we're not in, you know, this pandemic for a long period of time, and we can bring this back.
Commissioners, additional discussion? Mr. Presser, will you pull the commission?
Mr. Meiner?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray, you still there?
I think he failed to turn his mic back on, perhaps.
Go to Mr. Brady?
I am voting no on this issue.
Ms. Twine?
No.
And Mr. Murray, are you there?
Dick wants you calling. It's obviously not there. That's a first, too.
Maybe can somebody get him on the phone?
I'm doing that right now, really. I've texted him and
I've texted him, and I'll try calling him, too.
This is Dennis. I lost the connection for a minute. I'm back. I don't know what happened.
We're up to do with the vote, Dennis.
Do you vote yes or no on the legislation for the precision paving?
No.
So, Mr. President, that vote would be six to one?
That vote fails.
Again? Okay.
Ms. Cresser, will you please present item number two?
Yes, the new item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Fike Building LLC relating to property located at 158 to 160 East Market Street and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meizer.
I'm starting to write one here. I, this is number two now?
This is item, this is, it appears this is item number one on our sheet, but it become item number two because of the consent agenda change-up.
That's breaking up. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass this ordinance under the suspension of all the rules in full accordance with 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Again, I apologize. I don't know why I lost the connection there a moment ago. I really struggled with this piece of legislation. I think that in a lot of ways, this vote says a lot about what we're going to do going forward as a city and as a commission and what kind of policy directive we want to provide and what kind of hope that we want to provide to our residents at the outset of, at the other side of this crisis that we're in the middle of right now. I thought at first, well, the optics of this are strange. Why would we be proceeding with this right now? And the answer is, that's our job. That's our obligation. We have an obligation to make sure that there are jobs and there are tax revenues and a tax basis when we come out of this. There will be people who will misrepresent that these are funds that could be used to support our general obligation, and that's just not true. These are funds that are, these are TIF dollars. These are dollars that could not be spent on parks or police or fire, and if someone did so, they'd go to jail. You may not spend these dollars on those things. And so I think we have to find the right balance moving forward to plan for our future at the outset of this, at the other side of this, I should say, and to be able to manage our expenditures today, but where we have an opportunity like this to spend TIF dollars and stimulate our local economy and continue to support the tax base going forward, I think that's the right thing for us to do. I know this is tough, but I think that's what we should do, and I'm a yes vote. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
Yes, it is, we are in a position where we're making some difficult decisions because the reality is, is that we don't know what the future is going to bring. I do support the fact that we do need to continue to support our local businesses, our entrepreneurs. These are some very difficult decisions that we're having to make, but I do support this legislation. It is something that I believe that we need to as a city and as a community, because I believe that at some point in time, we may not get back to the way things were, but we need to be looking at the here and now as well as trying to have some type of foresight to also present the foundation, the base to include the progress that we've made. So I do support this.
Additional questions or discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?
This is just for the staff, you know, I just want to get from the staff that they've done the research and that they, that there is no concern that the Chesapeake TIF will have any problem making the payments on this.
John, this legislation has the name of our employee, John, sorry, I don't, I believe, John, are you with us on this call?
Commissioner President Brady, my guess is Matt Lasco is probably the staff person in the position to deal with that directly, but I can say before turning it over to Matt that property taxes in general are not nearly as impacted in the short term by any recessionary issues, and that the Chesapeake TIF has performed very well over a period of a long time, and we don't believe that will be in question. But I don't know if either Matt or Michelle would like to weigh in on the stability of that fund, but we do have great confidence in it.
Okay, and my specific concern is I recognize that the makeup of that property is a mix of rental, second homes, and some folks who live there continuously. And as long as you've taken into consideration the impact, the change in our, in the environment for tourists and keeping that sustaining that property, that's what I want to hear, that you've taken that in consideration, that it's going to be, you don't have any concerns with it. Because of the rentals, if rental income doesn't come back, if the tourist for this year, it may have an impact, as long as you factor that in, then it's, then I can support this.
Mr. Webster, I wonder if you can speak to the use of that building, because I believe we're going down, going down the wrong road on the use of that building.
Yes, absolutely. So Commissioner Poole, I think you make a good point in that certainly hospitality and tourism in the short term is going to be impacted by the current changes in the market. But because of the diversity of uses in that building, which include year-round homeowners, as you said, transient rental and year-round rental, as well as those used as a vacation home, it is unlikely, and this is why a property tax is a more resilient funding stream, is if this were all based on lodging taxes, I think you're absolutely right, you could see that die this year, but property taxes are paid in a later basis, the end of annual years, and it's unlikely that people would default on a property or taxes would skew significantly downward that fast based on a short-term recession, even if the recession weren't able to last. The Chesapeake building, again, was up and, you know, was really for sale and being occupied for the first time during the last recession. We've seen nothing but an upward trajectory. So I think certainly, as with anything else, we should monitor it, but there is no long-term concerns on our end that the Chesapeake TIF itself is in danger of not performing. I know Matt Lasco just texted me that he's been trying to get on, but he is having a hard time being heard, so I don't know, I don't know, Stuart, if anyone else is on, if they can help map with his issues, but he has tried to speak to this and unfortunately is having some technical difficulties.
That's all right. Thank you. With that analysis in mind, I can support this project. Thank you.
Excellent. Additional questions or concerns, discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Cresser, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Cresser, you present item number three, please.
Yes, item three is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $1,300,000 to Fike Building LLC in relation to the property located at 158 to 160 East Market Street and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddick.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. There's been a motion and a second discussion. No discussion necessary, apparently. Ms. Cresser, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Cresser, you present item number four, please.
Yes, item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation for the ODOT resurfacing urban paving City of Sandusky project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Would that, who would that be?
Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion, Commissioners. Mr. Klein, I believe, is on the call, is he not, Mr. Webster? I think this piece of legislation, because of its value and its importance to the city, deserves a brief explanation on Mr. Klein's part.
Yes, he is.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Aaron, welcome.
Okay, yeah, so this project, just over a million dollars out of city funds for this project is basically split in several different ways. Portions of it are 80/20, portions of it are 100% city costs, and other portions are 50/50 between ODOT and the city. Unfortunately, as we were going through the decision-making and design process with ODOT, there wasn't a lot that changed from when we passed this legislation a year ago. We added a little bit of concrete work on some of the side streets within the Cleveland Road right-of-way at Detrick and some of those others, Huntington and places like that, that just had a little bit of concrete apron that was severely deteriorated. However, as they were going through the design and submitted it from their district office to their central office, the final design of the project ended up being a $200,000 increase from last year to the city's portion. Now, that being said, what we're getting done with this million dollars is all of State Route 6 from the East Corporation limit all the way to the Tiffin Underpass. So that includes Huron, Cleveland Road, Washington, and then down Tiffin to the underpass. So there's quite a bit of work that's going to be done for a million dollars, and essentially the project is going to be split halfway between the city and halfway between ODOT. We'll get the new road surface, we've got some concrete repairs, and we also included the portion of concrete on Mylan Road from the overpass around the turn up to Cleveland Road as well. So all that will be included. And, you know, this is, this is a project that, in looking at the projects that were discussed tonight, this one is one that ODOT has scheduled to be bid out next week. With the oil prices the way they are right now, there's a big anticipation that we could be getting some really good pricing this time of year. Fortunately, we were really good at getting projects outbid early to get good pricing, but now oil prices have dropped significantly, so hopefully ODOT can get better pricing next week when they bid the project. If that's the case, ODOT, we have to pay ODOT upfront. They need their money by this week to be able to move forward with the project, and in the end, after all the final numbers are calculated and tallied, then they would give us a reimbursement or ask us for additional money at the end of the project. So we pay this out right now. We're involved through construction, we have an inspector on site, I'll be involved with ODOT to make those decisions about curbs and everything else, and then at the onset of the project, when all the numbers are rectified, we'll figure out what the real numbers were to the city, and then we'll either, like I said, get that reimbursement or get a request for a change order. So at this time, if anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer them.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddick.
Yeah, the Tiffin Avenue area, is that going to be by the underpass there? Any work along that area?
Three, Mr. President? Yeah, this project stops just, it goes under the underpass, but it doesn't do work along, like on the sidewalls of the underpass, the abutments for the railroad. They don't want to, ODOT didn't want to get the railroad involved, so this strictly is just resurfacing of the roadway there. And I had asked them last year on the, where you're, if you're coming northerly, northeasterly on Tiffin, and there's two lanes that narrow down to one, I had asked them if they could extend that second lane, because people really like to go extremely fast through there and try to beat the traffic next to them, but they said that they couldn't include that in this project. So there were some things that we couldn't do because of their funding sources and really tried to do some improvements in that area, but it's really just going to be resurfacing.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that was a concern of mine, the safety issue turning there on Tiffin heading towards downtown. It's like a little bottleneck right there, so understood. Thank you.
Mr. Klein, I wonder if you could expound for just a moment on the part of that puzzle that you and I talked about this afternoon, on the importance of maintaining our relationship with ODOT, which we enjoy a very good one with them, but how we leverage dollars with them to the millions and millions and millions of dollars, and how important that is to our city.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, this, these projects that we get from ODOT, including the projects that we get through the MPO, the regional planning, when we submit for those funds as well, as well as the safety application that was approved earlier in the agenda under the consent agenda, all of these projects, if they're delayed, they miss a bid, the design is late, any of those things, ODOT gets graded on an annual basis. Every project manager, every team member within ODOT gets graded on those dates and on those budgets. So in this situation, what they do is they'll pass that grade on to the municipality, and then you lose points on future applications. So every time we submit to the MPO, they have a simple question, and all it says is, have you been late on projects before? And if you are, if you have been, then you get docked a few points, and it really hurts the applications. So in this case, since ODOT's planning on moving forward with the project, if we were to back out of the project at this point, we would get those bad grades and we would get docked those points on future applications. And right now, with the thought that we've already submitted a couple of applications to the MPO and knowing that they have, they're already talking about potential stimulus dollars and things like that coming through from the federal government through ODOT, I really want to make sure that we can do everything to keep that relationship good because we have not missed any projects even well before I was here, back into the early 2000s, which is about how far back they go.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, additional discussion? Commissioner Murray, I wonder if you'd just take a moment to speak just briefly on, you had a good concept today when talking about an earlier piece of legislation of bonding, and I wonder if you'd speak to the possibility of perhaps, although we would be required to pay the million dollars to ODOT as early as next week, if we couldn't bond a project like this and kind of combine it with what we know we're going to do the moment we have the ability to do it, and that's citywide data.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we did discuss that as well with Mr. Webster and with Ms. Reader, and again, the thought would be that we can fund this now, we have ample liquidity to be able to fund it and then bond this off. You know, we thought, a couple of years ago, we were talking about historically low interest rates. We've made new history, and the interest rates are even lower still. This allows us to move forward with an important project. This allows us to move forward with an important project, but to conserve cash and to be able to manage our cash flow until such a point in time as we, we are a little bit more stable and we begin to see revenues return. You know, we talked a little bit before about our revenue sources and what the difference is between the property tax and the revenue sources that we primarily have. I know I'm getting a little feel, far afield of answering your direct question, but the issue that we have as compared to, let's say, a lot of townships, which are principally funded by property taxes, which are remarkably stable through economic downturns, is all three of our major sources of revenue, the income tax, the admissions tax, and the lodging tax, are going to be significantly impacted. How deep that, that's going to go, we don't know right now. And so I think this is a way to proceed with some important projects and, and still manage our cash flow. And, and the other thing is that, that some folks will point to, will suggest that the city has excess debt. We have very little debt that is, that is obligated by the general fund. And you really need, when you look at a city's debt, you need to break it into how it's funded. Some is funded by the, they're called GO bonds or general obligation bonds, but the vast, vast majority of our bonds are funded by our, by our users, the ratepayers, water and sewer. That's where the overwhelming bulk of our debt is. So the state has a cap, a cap in terms of how much general obligation bond, debt you're allowed to have. The TIF bonds are outside of that as well, it's a whole nother income stream. And so I think this is a great time to take advantage of the fact that, as a city, we've really pared down our debt, and, you know, we have that debt capacity now at an important point in time, just as we have the reserve at a very important time. And I think this is the time to take advantage of that capacity, because we will have historically low prices, historically low interest rates, and we can continue to provide economic stimulus to our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Commissioners, additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
Mr. Murray makes an excellent point. I would just ask that as we go forward, that when we get these butt, these conversations in the future about these bonds, that the staff provide us with a window of what the total's going to be. Just doing one little project at a time, and then two weeks later, we've got another bond, it's impossible for the public or for anyone to keep track of it. So when you come back with this one and the other one we talked about, let's include what you're projecting for the next several years, if that's how far your, your sightline is for these bonds. I do agree that this is a time, if we're going to borrow money, to do that, but I don't want to end up looking back eight months, a year and a half from now, going, oh gee, we stacked these and didn't, and didn't take a look at how many we were, we intended to do long-term. Or short-term, thank you.
Agreed. Mr. Crasser, you poll the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Meiner?
Did we lose Commissioner Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Crasser, you present item number five, please.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Erie Soil and Water Conservation District for participation in the Erie County National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase Three program. Phase Two, authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend the necessary funds for participation and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed? This is a point in time when someone needs to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Did we lose Naomi?
Second.
She's still there, and I think we have a motion.
Okay, sounds like she was in a tunnel. Okay, I couldn't, listen to her, okay.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Crasser, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Crasser, you present item number six, please.
Yes, item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2020 T-770 T4 Bobcat compact track loader from Streaker Tractor Sales Incorporated of Fremont, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sewer Maintenance Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Meiner?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Buying a Bobcat. Ms. Crasser, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda items, and we will turn now to our city manager for the city manager's report, Mr. Woobser. Mr. Woobser, are you with us?
I am with you now, sorry, I started on mute. So I thank the commission president, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start as usual with the donations. First, a donation of $10,000 for body worn cameras was received from the Randolph J. and Estelle M. Dorn Foundation. This is a second year contribution, I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second. Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Next, a donation of $500 for Target gift cards was received from Target for the purchase of supplies needed due to the pandemic, and ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion...
Next, a donation of 36 Tyvek suits and 50 masks received from Mike McCall with Habitat for Humanity, and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, our thanks to Mr. McCall.
Thank you. A donation of N95 masks was received from Scott Crasser, I'd ask for a donation.
So moved.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, our thanks to Mr. Crasser.
A donation of one gallon of disinfectant received for mad cleaning, I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, our deep thanks.
A motion to accept a donation from Dave and Ann Waddington, who have donated 10 pounds of wildflower mulch fertilizer and seed mix that is butterfly and hummingbird friendly and can be spread over approximately 1,000 square feet, and ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, with our thanks to Ann and Dave.
A donation of $1,912 from Carol Stoick for the purchase of a memorial bench in memory of William Charles Stoick. The bench will be installed in Washington Park near the corner of Washington Row and Wayne Street, I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, our thanks to Mrs. Stoick.
The Erie County Sheriff's Office donated Grohlite fixtures with an in-kind value of $500 to the city greenhouse, I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, our thanks to the sheriff.
And our final donation is a $50 donation for Parks and Recreation Fund received from the Hanks-Salloway family in memory of Skip Tony.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, our thanks to Hank and his family.
Yes, and that concludes our donations for this evening. I'll move on to new and old business, starting with the police department. Lieutenant Don Allen's scheduled training at the FBI Academy beginning March 30th was postponed due to COVID-19. It will be rescheduled at a later time. Also, Officer David West is retiring effective April 15th of this month. We congratulate and thank him on his 28 years of service to the city of Sandusky. The Sandusky Fire Department has been participating with a fire truck in the Ogo Parade, which is held on each Sunday during this COVID-19 pandemic. The parade goes through Sandusky Street, spreading cheers, Ogo passes out items to the community. I've had a chance to witness that, and it's a very powerful event, I thank our fire department for their involvement. For the finance department, the municipal income tax filing deadline has been extended until July 15th of this year. Also, the city will no longer have an employee available to assist with filing municipal income taxes, and for assistance, residents can go through the Regional Income Tax Agency, or RITA, at 1-800-860-7482, or visit www.ritaohio.com. Tax payments can also be made at the customer accounting office at City Hall, located at 240 Columbus Avenue in downtown Sandusky. Also, we want to remind the public that water and sewer bills can be paid the following ways, by visiting www.cityofsandusky.com/villepay for the following options. Automatic bill pay is available and free. ACH is where the monthly bill amount comes directly out of your bank account at no cost. Just fill out the form and return the form along with a deposit slip or voided check from your bank account. You can return the documents to customer accounting by placing them in the drop box located on East Washington Row and Columbus Avenue. You can also pay online by clicking View or Pay Your Bill Online. Register for an account or sign in if you've already registered. You can also choose to pay online with one-time pay, no registration required. There is an online service fee of $3.25 for online bill pay. Also, those who prefer paying with a check can use the drop box located curbside at the corner of East Washington Row and Columbus Avenue. Please, no coins in the drop box, or mail your payment to 240 Columbus Avenue, Sandusky, Ohio 44870. Also, to talk with a customer accounting representative, call 419-627-5893 between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Moving on to Public Works, due to COVID-19, Republic Services has suspended the city yard waste program until further notice, so their essential staff can focus on trash, trash collection at this time. Republic will notify the city two weeks prior to when the service will start up. In the meantime, anyone signed up for yard waste will not be billed, and for questions or concerns, please contact us at 419-626-5893. Also, in conjunction with ODNR, staff is planning to submit a two-page application to the National Fish and Wildlife Federation for maintenance and environmental monitoring of the Cedar Point Causeway Wetlands Project. If the short application is accepted, staff would seek formal approval from City Commission to submit the full application, and will provide details at that time. Staff received notice last week of this pre-application. I would ask for a motion to allow staff to go forward with that application.
So moved.
Then a motion and a second discussion, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. Also, construction season has arrived. In spite of all of the other challenges we're facing, there are several major sewer, water, and street projects taking place throughout the city. Please respect the lives of construction workers trying to improve the infrastructure in our community, and be mindful of work zones. A map of all closures and detours is available on the city's website and updated weekly. Specific project-related updates continue to be provided to affected stakeholders. Also, various divisions have begun seasonal preparation throughout the city. This includes installation of docks and buoys, placement of traffic calming measures, activation of park fountains, delivery of portable restrooms, and more frequent waste collection in the downtown business district. To report an issue or for questions or concern, please call 627-5829. Please note that drinking fountains will not be installed, and restroom buildings will not be reopened until the threat of COVID-19 is removed. Also, docks will be installed, the Shelby Street Boat Ram by Friday, April 17th, and water crews have commenced flushing fire hydrants. Periodic flushing of water mains is required to ensure high-quality water. Weekly flushing locations are available via Public Works Construction and Service updates on the city's website. For questions, please contact the water plant at 419-627-580. For community development, high grass. As of April 7th, code compliance crews have begun seasonal lawn maintenance at city-owned land bank lots to get a jumpstart in the growing season. Code compliance crews will start with city-owned lots and then move to privately owned lots and properties that grow over eight inches in height at the appropriate time. Reminder to all residents, if they believe properties exist in the city with high grass and weeds, they're encouraged to call the code compliance division at 419-627-5913 to ensure they're added to the mowing list and prioritized. As far as staffing, April 3rd, last day of Scott Schell's employment with the community development department as contract administrator for the Erie County Land Bank. Per the city's agreement with the county land bank, the partnership is only to last until the grant closed out of the neighborhood initiative program, which occurred this spring. We wish Scott well, all the best moving forward, and thank him for his work and passion on advancing the city's plight elimination, and just as an active and longtime resident and activist within the city. With the neighborhood initiative program now closed, the results of that grant management included $952,000 plus in total grant expenditure, 61 total properties demolished, totaling 93 units, and 53 of 61 properties in the city of Sandusky, which is around 90% of the total grant that Erie County received. And then finally, with the planning department, the regular planning commission meeting scheduled for April 22nd will be held remotely at 4:30. Board of Zoning Appeals for April has been canceled. The landmark commission meeting scheduled for April 15th will be held remotely at 4:30 p.m. The Arts and Culture Commission meeting has been canceled, and all remote meetings will be streamed live on the City of Sandusky Facebook page at https://www.facebook.com/cityofsandusky. The application materials and staff reports will be available online prior to the meetings. That concludes my remarks for this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Yeah, I'd like to maybe include a former state rep, Mr. Murray, along with the city manager. I think now more than ever, I've been thinking about this for the last four or five days, with this virus, how vital the census is going to be this year. I don't want to have City of Sandusky become handcuffed for the next 10 years. We do it every 10 years. I was involved with the last one 10 years ago, and we need to have every citizen in our community counted, because this could cost us big, big bucks. You know, we think this virus is bad, I don't want to lose any money, and maybe, if, Commissioner Murray, you know from working down at the state, how the effect would be if we fall below $25,000?
Well, it could be a major, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, may I respond?
Go ahead.
It would be a major impact potentially to the city on a couple of different levels, including the federal level, too. And so I think it's critically important, and, and, you know, our community doesn't have the communications resources, the internet in as wide, in as wide prevalence as is in some of the communities, so we are at risk. We are more at risk than most communities, I believe, to have folks not participate in census. That said, there is an excellent team within the city that's been working to be able to get people to... get people to complete the census. I know Talon Flor has been very active with that group. A lot of volunteers are active with that group and it'd be good to get an update from them, I suppose, perhaps by email or even at the next meeting as to where we are and what additional efforts we might be able to put toward this. I don't know how long, I actually don't know how long the census can still be completed. I assume there's a little bit of time, but I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, which commissioner was that?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
Yes, yes, yeah. I guess my concern is with this virus, there's a lot of people hunker down, they won't answer their doors. I filled mine out. We got it in the mail, I filled it out, sent it back in. You can fill it out online, but I'm concerned we could miss 500, maybe to 1,000 people and that, if we drop below 25,000, that's big bucks. That's a catalyst for change as far as, you know, we're discussing tonight about monies that we're going to have available with this virus, how it's affected our economy locally. But I'm worried about, you know, this is 10 years. We can't shake this, you know, and it's just, I don't want to be handcuffed for 10 years by missing out on 300 or 400 folks that didn't want to answer the door, didn't want to respond to this. With this current situation we got ongoing.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
To follow up on Mr. Waddington's concern, I think maybe it'd be appropriate to ask for the local census committee to give us a post-COVID-19 update in terms of what the plans are. Mr. Waddington is absolutely right. I mean, people aren't going to be answering their doors right now and we need to have another approach, a phone bank, maybe we put together volunteers to make calls. I don't know what the answer is, but I know we've got a lot of really smart people working on it and I'll bet they have some plans.
Mr. Wobser, it occurred to me that if the federal government is going to extend such important things like collecting taxes, they would certainly extend the census count. Do you have any indication that that's already happened?
Through the commission president, what I believe to be the deadline for the census as of right now is July 31st. Census Day or April 1st was when they began that. And so I do believe we have until July 31st to be counted, which hopefully will give us some time after the COVID-19 situation has at least started to decline a little bit. That being said, I think it's a really good idea for us to continue to be aggressive in the campaign. I think Talon has been our staff point person on that. He's worked very closely with the local census committee head, Chris Zess. And so I think if we could bring her in as well and Talon, whether we're back in physical meetings at that time or for a virtual meeting to give a presentation and to talk about how folks can make sure they get counted or potentially to volunteer to help get others counted, that would be really valuable.
I certainly am not at all opposed to some type of a minor marketing effort to do this also because I think as Mr. Waddington and Mr. Murray have reiterated, it is so critically important to us if you weigh the cost of a small marketing effort against the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that could be lost revenue by missing that mark by 100 or 500 votes, it may be well worth it. So I think that's something we need to continue to press the flesh on, so to speak.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington. Additional questions for the city manager? If not, we will move to our next item on our agenda, is any item of old business? No items of old business, how about items of new business, commissioners?
If I could just really quickly, Commissioner President Brady, just to state, and I meant to state this earlier and I did, and there has been some pretty significant marketing already going on with the census, but I do think it has been disrupted by COVID-19. There's been work on social media and we're actually in the works on a few other things that were marketing oriented campaigns, including some partnerships and competitions with nearby communities that got derailed by some of the COVID-19 stuff. So I just wanted to let folks know that Talon and Chris and everyone associated has been working really hard and we will continue to do so. And I think we're going to have to be even more creative to get counted this year, but we'll come back with that for future meetings as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wobser. Any additional items of new business, commissioners? If not, and before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to certainly acknowledge a couple of things. Number one, there are a couple of people responsible for how flawlessly this, almost flawlessly, this presentation came off tonight, and that would be Stuart Hamilton and it would be Jason Whirling. They both are responsible for this. Most of us have trouble turning our computer on, let alone getting to the correct site, but they've guided us through this and I think it's gone rather well. I will say from my own perspective, I don't like it. There's nothing about it that I like. This may come as a surprise to some of you, but I would rather be sitting in a room with all of them. So we are, I am hopeful that although this appears it's going to go on for a short while yet, maybe a longer while, we will continue with this method for only as long as we have to. And when we return to City Hall, we will certainly be able to have a more active meeting both among ourselves and hopefully back to audience participation. Until that time, I hope that all of you stay safe and maintain your social distancing. Nothing else, gentlemen, I'll ask, ladies and gentlemen, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We're adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.